Your Honor, would be Bailey Enterprises made fuel purchases $4,999.53. Core management software of $12,075. The charges consideration for that totals, that's $310,878.67 for payroll and liabilities. And so, for the amount of $204,813.62 for a total payable of $515,692.29. Second.
Okay, I do just want to clarify it as $310,878.67?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No problem.
That's correct.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the Finance Committee report as presented. Who, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any further business we wanted to discuss?
We have nothing, Your Honor.
Seeing no more discussion, the Finance Committee will stand adjourned at 6:46.
I now call the June 16th, 2020 regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7 o'clock. Councilman Larson will give us the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilman Rota will give us the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for today, its many offerings, opportunities, and the blessings it brings. We want to thank you for each one of the people in Riverton, the staff workers and just the citizens for always coming together and pushing through these tough times that we're in right now. Lord, we just ask that you guide, give us wisdom and help guide us to make the best decisions with Riverton in our thoughts. Lord, we ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Corey Rota.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilwoman Borders and Councilman Hancock.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is by Councilman Rota and a second by Councilwoman Schatz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare quorum as present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schatz has the motion and Councilwoman Bailey has the second. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, the Finance Committee.
We'll catch you in just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, I apologize.
Just a little bit, we'll get you.
I'm excited.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Anyone in the wa, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on any other may speak now. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Deb Starks, Deborah Starks. Live in Ward Three. Councilman Hancock and Bailey are my representatives, I guess. And I had contact with Councilman Bailey through email. I have my tablet here because I wrote some, some things, wanted to talk about, had some questions and some concerns that I wanted to present. And I just figure it'll be better if I try to read it from what I've got rather than ramble. And I also had an email with Chief Murphy.
Yes.
I wanted to express some concerns after an email that I sent to Mr. Hancock and Mr. Bailey way last September regarding the Anderson, Antelope killing. And I didn't hear back from them, either one of them. I guess they got busy, I got busy, but with the renewed issues with regard to police violence, it's just stirred my interest again and wanted to address some of those issues with you. I, the email that I sent, I had a number of questions in there. And so I just wanted to kind of revisit those. And, let me see, and then the chief today, I, one of the questions that I had was about some of the policies for police training. And so he did send me the handbook for.
The policy manual.
Policy manual. And thank you for doing that. And I did receive an apology from Mr. Hancock for not having responded. He just got busy with some things. I appreciate that also. So the questions that I had, and I'll just kind of read from what I've got here. So I just wanted to know if our police officers receive adequate training with regard to understanding the culture of the population of American Indians who reside here, especially with regard to Mr. Antelope's death? And what, what kind of cultural training, culturally appropriate training is provided to our officers? Probably also to the mayor, the council, and city staff, really. Also wondering what the protocol is for handling a situation like what occurred with Mr. Anderson. And I saw that that's addressed, I guess to a certain extent, in the, the manual regarding use of force. So I was just trying to get some additional information on how the police department, what their policies are on that. And then in addition to that, I guess at this point, I'd like to know if the, well, I guess my main focus is really just to start a conversation, I'm hoping, with the city of Riverton regarding these issues because we, I mean, it's not just Riverton, it's everywhere that we've got issues with regard to police violence against people of color. So that's a concern. And it has happened here. I guess my goal would be that there's either some policies in place or something to address those issues so that they don't happen again. That, I mean, ideally, that would be great. So I think some of the things that I think would be good to be visiting about is just, are there, you know, policies with regard to using chokeholds or other dangerous practices such as the neck restraints? And I looked at the manual, but I didn't get all the way through that. So I'm not sure if all of that was included in there. Just wondering also if officers receive any training in de-escalation techniques? Because my thoughts were that it was, there possibly could have been some things that would have been done prior to things escalating with Mr. Antelope that perhaps could have been done differently, that would have saved a life, perhaps.
Your Honor, I can answer most of her questions if, if you'd like.
Would you like answers or are you just wanting to start a dialogue?
Yeah, I'd like to start a dialogue, I guess, and and not right now. and not right now, but I'm with everybody here and take up people's time with that. But I guess, yeah, I'll just present my, my thoughts on this and then, then I'd be glad to, to see if you have any questions or any other thoughts on where we might go from here or if it's something that needs to be thought about or if there's any, any options. I'd be glad to, I mean, I've read through a lot of the, the newspaper reports and, and things like that, so I'm familiar with kind of what, what took place, but, um, kind of just want to, I guess, make a case for, uh, for doing some, some additional training, for looking at policies of force. You know, I was looking at the, um, wondering about how diverse the Riverton Police Department is since we have like basically a, uh, 75% white, 25% people of color.
We have five Native American officers.
And is that so out of how many, how many officers?
Twenty-nine.
I don't know if I can do the math that fast, but whatever that percentage is, five of 29?
Pretty good percent.
How much?
Twenty percent.
Okay. And so that would be, that's great because that, uh, the population is pretty, you know, that's pretty close.
Pretty good, huh?
We have 25% people of color.
And, and just so you know, we do 40 hours of crisis intervention training. Um, and that training is, we have White Buffalo come in and talk to us, Wind River Cares come in and talk to us, Arapo Clinic comes and talks to us. It's a 40-hour training on this kind of stuff with those people represented. So I feel like we do a really good job of, of training the officers. Like I said, we've hired five Native Americans that, that are great officers for us. Um, they work each shift, um, so I feel like we do a really good job of, of training our officers appropriately.
Yeah, and it, you know, I mean, cultural, the, the diversity issue and the cultural awareness is something that, that's just like an ongoing thing. So not necessarily just when they first start, but something that's, that's an ongoing process.
So we do the 40-hour crisis intervention training twice a year.
That's good, that's great. And hoping that the police that work in Riverton also live in Riverton, is that correct, you know?
We have some that live inland or some that live out in the country, so it just, there's, it's a variation.
Some cities require that, and we've looked at that to see that officers would have to, but we do not have that in our policy to have them live in the city limits.
Yeah, and I realize it's, it's, uh, with a more rural area, it's a little bit more of a concern. You got people that are living right outside of Riverton that are within the county, but I think it just helps to have that connection if people are actually living here and working here at the same time rather than if they were coming from somewhere else.
And some of those choices are made because of their likes, like if you want to have a horse, you can't have that in town, so.
Right. So I guess, you know, I think one of the, you know, one of my, one of my personal commitments is just to become a better, a better ally, a white ally of, uh, people of color. And so I figure one of the best ways that I can do that is to try to learn more about what exactly is going on, how it's working, what are we doing, what can we improve, um, to try to ensure that there's not incidents like what happened with, with Mr. Antelope again, I mean.
Ma'am, so can I just ask one question? So that incident, he shoved a knife into the officer's chest once and was coming to do it a second time. What would you like him to have done?
What, what I think could have happened, if, if we want to go there now, but I, I think what could, what could happen, and I know the police have a difficult job, but I think what could happen is that, you know, it's a situation where he was riding around in a, a cart, to my understanding, in the, in the parking lot and probably had been drinking, would be my understanding. So, I mean, right there, that's not a threatening situation, not at that point, it's not. How does it get from, you know, point A to someone's death, how does it get to that point?
So because Mr. Anderson pulled a knife out of his boot and stabbed the officer.
Right, and I understand at that point, that's where, um, lethal force was.
Justified.
Was, I would assume that it was justified, I don't know that, but I think that there's, we have some windows of opportunity before we get to that point, you know, we always do. There's other opportunities before it got to that point. Because it doesn't sound like he was belligerent and resistant from the very beginning. He became more resistant when the officer reached down to, to touch him. And I think if there's an understanding of the, a person's, um, situation and how threatening that might seem to somebody.
So we, we have literally dealt with this person every day for the last 30 years. And, and so in my opinion, it was his choice to do that, not the officer's. And so when you deal with somebody every day for 30 years and then one day he decides to shove a, a knife in your chest, I, I just don't understand what, what you would like us to do with that.
Well, like I said, I think there's opportunities before it gets to that point. It obviously escalated from a lower level, um, to a higher level where something else was required at that point.
Right, but that took half a second.
Into the microphone, it's hard to hear you.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So that, that incident, what you're talking about, literally took one second to happen.
Well, that incident, but.
But that's the incident we're talking about.
Well, right, but I'm sure the officer was on scene for longer than one second. There was a period of time from the time he got there to Mr. Anderson's death, it was probably, there was more going on.
Yeah, he was there probably 15 or 20 minutes, trying to talk to him, you know, de-escalating the situation. So, yeah, he was there for quite a while.
Well, I, I'm, my just, my thoughts are that perhaps, and I don't, you know, I'm, I don't know that for sure, but my, my guess is that perhaps that could have been handled in a different way so it did not escalate to that point, perhaps it could not have. Perhaps it was, that was exactly what, you know, what happened is what, the only way it could have unfolded. I'm just suggesting that there might have been some other options, um, prior to that escalation that could have been looked at. And that perhaps those are things that, would have to do with, um, how the officer responded, I mean, perhaps if he felt that threatened, maybe he should have called for, for backup of somebody else. And there could have been a physical restraint instead of.
The, the thing is, he didn't feel threatened until he had a knife shoved in his chest, that's my point.
Yeah, well, I mean, I.
Mrs. Starks, we do appreciate you coming, and we will set up meetings with you. You're welcome to, to talk with me and the chief at length on this subject. One of the things that's inflammatory is that you refer to it as a killing. And it's been found by experts to be a justifiable homicide. And so what we really need to do is, is tighten our languages and try to work together and, and not be accusatory. But, uh, once we get the information out, it's pretty obvious that there's two sides of that. And, and Mr. Anderson was the one that brought the knife to the operation. And he did choose the location of where he brought the knife. And he did choose to use that against a police officer. And unfortunately, um, when you make all those choices, uh, the officer has to respond. Now, what I think you're suggesting is there, is there room for, is there latitude for us to work and help? I think there is, and I think we, we have wonderful officers. We have five really dedicated Native American officers that understand the problem and would like, that's why they're on the force, is they would like to correct that. So is there room to improve? Yes, ma'am. And we will, we'll do everything we can, and if you want to schedule time with us to, and there's other activists, activists in the community that we can put you in touch with. But, but we have, we have gone over this and.
Right, I'm not wanting to go over it, I really did not want, that was not my intention for coming tonight, is to rehash that out because it's already been decided. I'm, my concern is just that we really, you guys don't want it to happen again, I don't want it to happen again, the community doesn't want it to happen. So what do we need to do, what, I mean, it's not like we're all perfect, um, in, in how that went down. So isn't there something that we could all work towards, um, actively? So that, that's, um, a minimal, has a minimal chance of happening again. I think one of my main points is that there, the issue of, of, of of race, I think, is, has to be considered in this. And so my, my, my goal is that, you know, what are we doing to actively, um, address that within, you know, within the community? And accept responsibility for ourselves, um, to try to curb any kind of problems. And if we just ignore it and say, yeah, this has happened, but it was all, um, you know, it was, there really was nothing we could do about it, then it kind of negates the idea that maybe there is something that we could do about it, whether it's attitudes or whether it's training or whether it's, uh, help for Mr. Antelope and, and his issues, whatever it might be, I don't know, you know, but I think that there's, there's things that we could continue to look at and we should look at as a community and, and as city council. So that's, that's my, that's what I'm proposing, I'd love to be able to visit with other people about it. And, you know, I mean, maybe, I think it's important to look at the policies of, um, force that the, that the department has established. I don't, and maybe you visited with, I think I read that there was some visiting with, uh, some members of the tribal community, so maybe there was some possibility of having a, a citizen review committee or something like that. Um, I don't know, those are just, um, ideas that I wanted to throw out.
We do have a healing circle that, that we discuss these matters at and, and try to make them public and have input from, and less than a month ago, I sat on that, uh, three-hour meeting in, on a Saturday. And we, and these were the things we discussed, and we'll be glad to get you involved with those.
Yeah, I would, I would be glad to, yeah.
Councilwoman Schatz.
Yes, Your Honor, um, hearing you talk, ma'am, I think that, have you heard of the Solutions Committee? It's a committee that was formed by the city of Riverton about three or four years ago. It's a committee of people, just citizens in Riverton that are working towards almost exactly what you are speaking of today, ways to bring the communities together, um, the community of, of city Riverton as well as the tribal entities and fighting the substance abuse and the racism and those types of things. They are meeting again next Thursday here in City Hall, does anybody know which room that they're meeting in?
Your Honor?
In here.
They're, they're meeting in this room, Councilwoman.
Maybe she could just come and check it out and.
Absolutely, that's a special meeting, so it's going to have a single item on the agenda probably, but yeah, we absolutely, it, it's a good time for anybody to come look at it.
I think if you just come and just check it out, just sit back and listen, I think that's a committee that would work perfect for you and we need more people like you with your voice to sit on that committee, if you're interested.
Sure, and it's called the Solution Committee?
Solutions Committee, correct, and I think, um, Tim and Carla are the liaisons to that. So if you did reach out to them, they could give you more information on the dates and times they do meet. And I do think it's regular, I think it's every other week or something like that.
Your Honor, I have her email, I can email her all of the.
And actually, the Solutions Committee is the chief's committee.
Okay.
So, um, chief runs that.
Okay.
And so he could get you all that information.
Okay, that would be great.
We would love to have you in that, and if you would like personal conversations with the chief and myself, we would, we would really appreciate the opportunity to sit down at, at length and give you all, all information that we know.
Okay.
We, we want solutions.
Okay, yeah, I, I would like to do that, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Deborah, we appreciate you coming. And Deborah, if you want to stay after, we'll set those times up right away so that you don't have to wait. This is an important subject for us, right? Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, Approval of the Minutes, June 2nd, 2020 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the Minutes, June 9th, 2020 Special Council Meeting. Approval of the Minutes, June 16th, 2020 Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for June 16th, 2020. Approval of the Municipal Court Report for the Month of May, 2020. And a plat for Wind River Heritage Edition, petitioners are Wind River Heritage Center Incorporated.
Thank you. Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, uh, the Finance Committee met tonight and approved the consideration of bills to be paid in the amount of $310,878.67 payroll and liabilities for June 5th, 2020 in the amount of $204,813.62 for a grand total of $515,692.29.
Thank you. Chairman Bailey? The Chair would entertain, would entertain a motion to approve the agenda item as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by, um, Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilman Rota. Councilman Bailey?
Your Honor, I would abstain from the Bailey Enterprises line item on the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We have a special treat tonight. Becky Weber has chosen to retire, and if she would meet, uh, the chief and I down at the podium, we'd appreciate it.
Your Honor, I'll try not to get as emotional as I did two weeks ago at Scott Comer's thing. I got pretty emotional.
Oh, not you.
No, you can't start crying already because then I'll start. So Becky Weber was our animal control officer from October 6th, 2014 until two weeks ago. She's decided to retire, so we wanted to wish her, uh, well, and I wanted to give her this nice little groundhog because she really loved dealing with the groundhogs on West Sunset.
Becky, this is a certification of your retirement. Given the sincere appreciation for the outstanding contribution made to Riverton Police Department animal control officer position as make, as successful as it is today. And you really have done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
It's been fun watching you work town and.
Well, I've enjoyed my job, I did.
Get around there, and we really will miss you, so thanks.
Well, I'll miss part of it.
I get your picture with the chief and the mayor, thank you.
With my little friend?
Yes.
I'm going to miss her particularly.
Thanks for coming, guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Your Honor, she will be missed.
She will be, she's such a pleasant person, it will be hard to replace her. Maybe we can make Councilwoman Schatz to do it.
Thought crossed my mind, I'm not going to lie.
After reminder, she can't take them home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have to dig a bigger yard.
I will, I really will, I'm looking.
Consideration of Ordinance Number 20-002, second reading, rezoning of 207 South Sixth Street East. Would the city clerk please read Ordinance Number 20-002 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, Proposed Ordinance Number 20-002 on second reading. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the rezone of Lot 6, Block 27, original town of Riverton, addressed as 207. the rezone of Lot 6, Block 27, original town of Riverton, addressed as 207 South 60th East to the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from commercial C1 to residential R2.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 20-002 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Larson and a second by Councilwoman Schotza. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Consideration of ordinance number 20-003, second reading of rezoning of 605 East Washington. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 20-003 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 20-003 on second reading. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the rezone of Lot 5, Block 27, original town of Riverton, addressed to 605 East Washington Avenue to the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from commercial C1 to residential R2.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 20-003 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Bailey has a motion and Councilwoman Councilwoman Schotza has a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item 12, bid award, streets and alley dump truck with plow attachment. Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. During the preparation and adoption of the upcoming fiscal year's budget, the Riverton City Council authorized the purchase of one dump truck, snowplow, and sander combination vehicle. The city of Riverton budgeted $198,000 for this project. The city's fleet and sanitation manager was very eager to get this project going and a lot of credit goes to him for his work in preparing not only the budget numbers but after adoption, getting on the ball so we can get this vehicle purchased in a timely manner. So Brian Eggleston began looking at options to piggyback with the state of Wyoming for this truck purchase. Similar to other piggyback purchases made by the city of Riverton, this follows state statute and allows for us to streamline the bid process by not advertising but still comply with state statute to award to the most responsible lowest bid. The state of Wyoming does have a truck through the piggyback program that we could purchase. And it actually is awarded to several vendors. In your packet, you see that table where Floyd's Truck Center was awarded the chassis and snowplow in the amount of $109,772. Able Equipment was awarded the sander and spreader option at $13,093. And Ameritech Equipment was awarded the dump body hydraulics and upfitting portion of this purchase at 600 excuse me, $64,369 for a total of $187,234. It is staff's recommendation that the city of Riverton approve the purchase of this dump truck with attachments through the cooperative purchase program with the state of Wyoming. With the budget, there's enough funds in the upcoming fiscal year for this purchase and it allows us to utilize the remaining balance for other upfitting, which would be like a radio and emergency lights. Therefore, again, I want to give credit to Brian Eggleston for his hard work on this and, most importantly, his prompt work. And with that, I'll stand for any questions, should you have any.
$10,000 for a radio, it's gonna be a pretty good radio.
Your Honor, we'll get creative.
It's gonna have an eight-track, I bet, huh? Thank you for the report. The chair would entertain a motion to award the purchase of one 2021 Freightliner dump truck vehicle along with the dump bodies and snowplow and the uplift.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schotza, motion, and Councilwoman Bailey has a second. Any discussion? As I read that report, the state bought 26 of these in addition to this one that we got. So it must be a pretty good deal, huh?
Yep, Your Honor, that's correct. One of the benefits of piggybacking with the state is they have the economy of scale. They put out a certain number of trucks and if there's one in excess, we can hop on and grab one that's in excess.
Good job. We appreciate the effort. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Reports and comments, item 13, Councilwoman Bailey, could you start us off?
Sure, thank you. Again, I attended the force committee meeting that we had last week, I think it was. They all blend together after a while. Again, we've got several projects going on in the city with the One Cent Fix Our Roads Committee funds. They have awarded those. Hill Street is still in the process of getting final design and they're hoping that, again, depending on our budget, we should have enough to do Hill Street this season also. So we're doing East Sunset, Summit Drive, what's the one I'm forgetting?
Your Honor, that would be Gannett.
Gannett, okay. And they're starting on Gannett, which will be quite a project, of course. And then if Hill Street comes in at a reasonable amount and we have enough funds in the in thing, we'll be able to fix Hill Street this year also. Down on Monroe and Summit, they did anybody that drives down there realizes in the wintertime and in the spring, we get some heaving because of the high water table in there. So the committee did approve a little bit of a change order on that street and they put in a drain that would help drain that area and get that water into the storm sewer, which should help alleviate that heaving problem. And so while the contractor was there, they gave us a price that was pretty reasonable compared to what it would be if we did that separately. And so the force committee approved that at that meeting also. Other than that, it's been great to see, again, the economy kicking back in and things loosening up and everybody getting back to to normal. And, you know, the I think the Riverton Friday Night Cruise is slowing down a little bit with people being able to go out and do other things. And so it was great while it lasted. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Councilwoman Schotza?
Yes, Your Honor. Just wanted to talk about kicking trash real quick. We did a really big one on last Wednesday, had a lot of people show up, got a lot of trash picked up on North Eighth West from Sunset down to Webbwood. It's really great around this time of the year, a lot of people start showing up to do that. So it's it's nice and it's a lot of fun to get to know new people and see new faces. I just want to remind citizens that it is our duty as citizens of Riverton to report things that don't look right or, you know, that can be fixed, such as the weeds. And with the moisture that we got, this is the time when they're really popping up. So on the website, the City of Riverton website, you can actually go there and report a concern. I did one before I walked in here tonight. It took me about 35 seconds to go in there, post the picture that I saw as I was driving down here from home. And I'm sure tomorrow, the city staff will get right on that and start notifying individuals to get their get their weeds cleaned up. It is our duty. It's not, you know, being a tattletale or anything. We want our community to look good. That's what we have kicking trash for and and everything else. And speaking of cleaning up our our homes and picking up weeds, as everybody I'm sure saw, the the yard waste is closed as of right now with the Riverton land bail station. So I just want to let people know that there are I looked it up, there's three other places in the county that you can dump that waste, that we got Lander landfill, Dubois landfill, and the Sandra landfill. So if you do have a truckload full of the yard waste, take it to those places while they are cleaning up the incident that happened today down at the Riverton bail station. I want to give a huge shout out to Casey Bailey, which I already talked to the mayor about. This weekend, she held and her and her husband and her kids and some close friends made a three-on-three soccer tournament happen here in Riverton, which is, I think, the first one in the state for this year. And she made it happen in about three weeks. They had over 55 teams show up from all over the state of Wyoming. And I was doing registration, so I got the pleasure of seeing all those faces of those parents and those kids that showed up to play soccer. And that was the highlight of my year so far. It was nothing but a good time and smiles the entire day. And that's I want to give Casey another shout out because she's the kind of person that you say she says, I want to do something, and she will let nothing stand in her way of making that happen. It is impressive. And if we could have more people like that, I mean, things would you would be amazed at the things that could happen. Sometimes we make excuses, saying, oh, well, we don't have enough time, we don't have enough volunteers. Casey would never let that happen. She just makes it happen. She finds volunteers and she finds the time and she finds the resources to make it happen. So I just think she's an amazing individual and many more people like her. Solutions, sorry, the Community Engagement Committee is meeting with the Solutions Committee next Thursday to discuss the.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood watch program. So like I talked about that earlier, if you want to be a part of those conversations and be a part of those committees, just contact the city of Riverton and we'll figure out how to get you to those meetings to be a part of the solution and fix the problems that we have. Other than that, Mayor, that's all I got.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it. Kyle?
Attended the yesterday, the meeting over in Lander on waste management. That's I normally call it garbage. Waste management and we're currently have about $19 million in reserves. The question was asked, how much does it cost to show me to put that place into the graveyard? And they estimated that it would be full sometime at the end of the year, that it would take $1,600,000 to do it. And they would get a grant from Wyoming so that they would only have to pull me up 50%. Second question was asked, what does it cost to monitor the water for all waste management sites? And it's roughly about $84,000, which is a is pretty good. And it appears that we're managing our resources quite well. And that was the meeting was adjourned. Second meeting I have to report on is the Solutions Meeting that was held on Thursday, the 11th. The next one will be held, they anticipate, on June 25 at 6 o'clock. And last meeting was held in the bullpen, but this new one will be held here. All right? And what the main concern was that it appears that we're having more campsites on the bike And there appears to be more weapons being used in this area. And so that was moved to the top and that's why we're talking about neighborhood watch, et cetera. That's all I have to report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Corey?
Mayor, not to sound like an echo of everybody, again, I want to encourage everybody who is interested in the Neighborhood Watch. It's a great opportunity to make it, make yourself be known. The more people we have, the more widespread it can be and the sooner it can get off the ground. It was nice to see. I've been seeing banks are back opening, so we're just about there. It seems most of the economy's about there, so Riverton, keep holding on. Huge kudos to everybody that has come out this far for the other businesses. Again, the road construction has begun. I want to give a thank you to the construction workers ahead of time for their quick and courteous work. And I want to want to remind all the citizens, I know it's a little frustrating, but just be courteous, take your time, it'll be over sooner than later, and we'll be very glad when it is. I I know they'll do a great job and I look forward to seeing that. Also, something I wanted to mention with the there's a lot of events, some that are being canceled, some that are moving forward. Becca talked a little bit about the website. We have an opportunity for nonprofits. There's no charge, is that correct? No charge for nonprofits, but businesses, if you want to post an event on the website, you can submit your event there. And correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, but it's free for nonprofits, but is there a price for business?
Generally speaking, Your Honor, generally speaking, Councilman, any community event where it's all it's it's open is fine.
Okay. So I I just want to encourage those who are still having their events, get on there and make it known. You'd probably be surprised by how many people check our website and they want to see those kind of events and know that they're happening. It's just a great outlet I wanted to remind everybody of. With that being said, there's quite a few houses being sold and built in my neighborhood, so that's always exciting to see. I know Murdochs is going to be opening soon. It looks like they're putting the finishing touches on there. So I I just want to give a huge round of applause to Riverton. I think we're doing really good with everything that's been going on. Like I said, we've got amazing citizens. Businesses are pushing through and it looks like we're we're almost through this whole thing. So that is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bailey?
Yes, I forgot one item. I have gone to a couple of meetings for the Happy Days Committee, which, when we discovered that the Day in the Park was canceled on July 11th, a group of people got together and decided to come up with an event. And basically, we're Joe and Rose Stanberry and Ray and Julie Buller went out and paid for a band to come. And there's going to be a band with a street dance on at Broadway and Main Street, so that the 400 block south of Main Street, they're going to block that off and have a street dance and everything. And then they're going to have Main Street closed from 4 o'clock to about 9 o'clock. And they're going to have different events and vendors and all kinds of fun stuff to do. So it's going to be a great little event to come out and have a good time and and watch a band. And there's going to be a barbecue and all kinds of food vendors and all kinds of fun.
It's from daylight donuts all the way down past.
Yeah. So from Seventh Street to First Street is where they're going to block Main off, similar to when we have the car and bike show and some of that kind of stuff. And so so they got all kinds of great events planned and.
Your Honor, the police department will be down there serving popsicles to kids.
All right.
And adults?
And adults.
Okay.
Popsicle and a donut. I don't think those go together, but we'll see.
They call themselves instead of Judy Buller, it's the Downtowners Association.
Yes.
Well, Judy will change that before we're done. She's she's a goer. Talk about somebody that goes.
Oh, yeah.
Judy's there, too. Tony, do you have anything to add?
Your Honor, I just have a couple items. We've already mentioned the Joint Solutions Engagement. It's the 25th, 6 p.m. in this room. So we'll have tables, we'll have seating set up at that time. We, as everyone knows and who has mentioned a little bit in one in part of the roundtable, we did have a fire at the with the.
Tub grinder.
Tub grinder, the tub grinder, and it did set some of our piles on fire. We are looking into there we had some wonderful firemen that actually came out and they they did a great job containing it. Everybody worked really hard. City crews worked really hard to respond very quickly. We're happy to report that nobody was really hurt and everybody was safe and that was the important thing. We are, you know, a lot of the questions we get are, you know, what what do we do now with that? As you as you've seen on Facebook already and has been mentioned, the it isn't open for individual drop offs, but we're going to continue that service that we provide. So very much a great deal of appreciation to our staff that are taking care of that and everybody who's responded and adjusted now. It's a little bit challenging. That is an expensive piece of equipment. The question we keep getting is how much? Well, at this point, we don't know. We'll have to figure out the spec. Prices run from $300,000 to $800,000 depending on what you buy. So that's a there's a lot of conversations to be had about that, but we'll get to that when once we get a little bit more information. Just happened this afternoon. But we are happy to report that nobody was injured and that's really the important thing. You have do you have been provided some numbers. We are submitting for the 56 permit. We finally have all those numbers put together to discuss with Game and Fish. So we believe we've done everything that they've asked. We've put everything together. It is our understanding at this point that the previous action on council directed staff to pursue it and to and to make that application. Assuming they do not require a specific resolution, we will continue down that road and to direct it other way. So we will be making that application and presenting that. So we will be making that application and presenting that. Hopefully, they'll give a relatively quick turnaround and tell us and issue that, and so we can start doing work on that. We've been very appreciative of everybody who's done counts for us. I believe every single person at this table has, and in this, in this part of the room at least, has, at one point or another, pointed out where one or another of the animals were. So thank you very much for that. But we hope to be able to give you something sooner rather than later, but that application will be going in. As a reminder, there is a fourth meeting this month on the 30th. That is scheduled for 5:30. That's budget amendments, our end of the year, it just happens, our end of the year falls right before the end of the year. So that's really nice. That's really nice, and so we don't have a lot of lag right there. So we will be presenting budget amendments at that time for the year. Airport Board is Friday at 8 a.m. at City Hall this week. And as has been pointed out about the website, we would encourage everyone to start not only using the calendar, but using that function to give us information. So, you know, as it was mentioned, there's many, there's multiple individuals that can go and look and find that different, that picture that you just sent in, Councilwoman. I can pull it up on my computer, and then code enforcement can also see it there. So there's more than one person that looks at it. I think we've done pretty well on being as responsive as we can to those. And if you look through them, there are a fair amount, so we do appreciate that. Your Honor, with that, I do not have any, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. I had a phone call this evening on my machine that was asking when we would start spraying mosquitoes. Does anybody have?
June 22nd, Your Honor.
June 22nd?
Yes. Your Honor, we are advertising for that in the paper as is required, so, so we are trying to get that word out there. And we have had that question, so we've been answering that the same.
Are we afraid the mosquitoes are going to be able to read the advertisement?
They can leave if they want.
We want to give them notice to leave, Your Honor. That way, we can not use the product if we don't have to. It's just a gossip.
I just wondered.
That's why they put those signs up where you don't spray, that way mosquitoes can.
Sounds like that's more than fair, to give them a running chance at least. With that said, we've, we've had some things go on. Rose Salamanca from the DOJ out of the Denver office called me on the first week of this month, and we had a conversation, she and I, about the peace march, peace rally in the park. And I appreciated that conversation with her, and, and that went over really well, and it was peaceful, and, and people were able to protest and do the things that they would like to do. We also had kind of a strange incident, and I appreciate the police department, the chief, the, the Tony and the staff for helping. We had an investigation on the alley in, between Broadway and would be Fifth Street, I believe, on the north side of Main, and there was a, a large amount of blood. We didn't find any body, anybody that went with that blood. But it was in between two dumpsters in that alley. And we got together, and the city staff took care of that. The homeowner, the business owner across the alley didn't want that to be left. And so once that came to our attention, we took care of that. And, and besides that, he asked for trash can replacements, and I appreciate those being provided. And, and those have lids on them, and, and I appreciate that fast service there. So thank you very much. Councilman Bailey beat me to the Happy Days planning. I appreciate Councilman Bailey being at those meetings and Tony being at those meetings. And, and that's just a fast-moving, quick opportunity for us to, to do. And I would encourage everybody to make sure that they put that on their schedule, July 11th. It's going to start at four, kid-friendly games and, and petting zoo and all sorts of activities. Ice cream freeze-off, and so there's, there's just a lot of family activities. And then that evening, we do go into that street dance. And I appreciate all the efforts that Joe Stansberry and Rose and, and Judy Buller and Ray Buller have put in. I think the, I think the First Interstate contributed to that, and also did bartend. And so that's just, that's just how great Riverton is. We, we come together and we make things work. And, and I just would like to thank those individuals and those businesses. The businesses in Riverton have been outstanding. There's a few lags that aren't getting their lobbies open, so those lunch trolls that we are, that would like to go to everybody's place and eat, can't get inside yet, but we do appreciate those that are open, and we're looking forward to those getting open. City staff and myself have been involved heavily in the conversations with the Riverton Medical District over application for money through the state of Wyoming. That's still going on, still looking at that. And so we appreciate the efforts that the staff put in on that to make that, that have conversation. We also, I sat in, government can only do this, that's the only way it can be described, at a Zoom meeting that was supposed to start at 2:00 in the afternoon, that they called early and said, you need to get on the Zoom. It's going to be, it's going to start around 10:30. And we finally got around to testifying about 3:30 in the afternoon. And so that was an interesting process to watch, and disappointing to see our own senator from Lander got that conversation. And so interesting process, so. And with the other thing that's disappointing, we might as well get that, everybody else has mentioned, the tub grinder catching on fire. I think that's kind of an annual event, or every four years or something, we, we try to set that on fire.
Unfortunately, it does happen more than we like.
Yeah. And it's, it's a really tough piece of equipment, and so the friction that is caused there, turning pallets into useful product is not an easy thing to do. So we do appreciate that and the, and the work that's put forward there. We have one other comment that has come to me this last week, and that is the condition of the parking lot in front of City Hall. And I would like everybody to brainstorm with what we can do. What we have is, I suppose, the best way to describe it is youth groups. And Megan's the youngest one here, I think, so she's probably in trouble for doing it. But they're not picking up their litter, and they're trashing up the, the parking lot. And if you can think of some way, I'll go talk to them in the evenings and see if I can get them to, to pick up and, and police themselves. Maybe we need to put in some more dumpsters out in the parking lot. Kristen's staff has been more than willing to, to go through the parking lot. And I also had to have a call this morning from a business in, in this strip mall area that is struggling with vagrants, and, and so I'll, I'll work with the police chief tomorrow and see what we can do to, to help that happen and change.
Your Honor, we can put the front parking lot on extra patrol too. I'll put that extra patrol tonight, so the guys will stop and talk to the kids.
That really would help. And what Rose was calling about, clear back to the DOJ conversation, was a Confederate flag that was floating through town. And I think that's, just by having those conversations, has, has worked too. So I think that will work. And, and we need to help people understand that they do have, personal responsibility is theirs to keep parking lot clean and to keep their yards mowed and to keep the weeds down. And, and we really do appreciate it if you're in a neighborhood that needs some weed control, grab a shovel and come help us, because we really do need help. There's lots of weeds. And, and go introduce yourself to your neighbor and help them cut some weeds, and you'll be surprised, you'll have a friend for life. So I would encourage you to do those things. Is there any other things that need to be taken care of?
Your Honor, I do not believe so. If I, if I may, one of the things we've mentioned with Happy Days and the like, we've had a number of individuals that have wanted to do different events for the fair parade and the like. What we would ask is, we want to be helpful to those, and we understand that we have a unique situation with federal and main, both being state highways, and they have their own permitting process. But what we have done is developed some pre, some traffic control plan documents in advance that they can just take. We can, we've modified a couple of those recently in very short order. So we understand that between shutting down not only the state street with YDOT, but then having side streets, and that's the city. And then if you have either an open container permit, or then you get into liquor lot, staff can help with that. And we're knowledgeable about it. We've become very, very knowledgeable about it, simply because we've had to. So if there are any groups that are out there that want, that are going to do that, give us a call so we can give you a hand and get you the documents you need in advance and direct you to them pretty quickly. Most of them can be filled out online for the state and even us, but we can very much so help with those and make that a lot quicker process for folks. Because it seems, once they read it, sometimes it seems a little daunting, but we do want to help, and we think we, we have the way to do that in very short order.
Super. Thank you, Tony. Anybody else? Staff, anybody? Without any objections, we stand adjourned at 8 o'clock. Thank you.